I want to thank everybody who is here in person, who is tuning in, streaming on the Internet, and all of what we hope will be, people will take up the opportunity to watch this video online. It will be on the League of Women Voters website. And Charter has agreed to rebroadcast these. I'll mention the rebroadcast dates now and at the end. And we've also, the dates and times are on the podium here, and they're also on the table out front. So please make a note of them if you know people who want to watch, or, I mean, that makes it kind of handy on their cable TV. That'll be Channel 19. So this is the forum for County Commissioner. My name is Marguerite Herman. This is being presented by the League of Women Voters of Cheyenne. We've done this in previous years, have had a candidate forum for a couple of elections, so we're getting back into the groove again. We have 13 candidates running for Laramie County Commissioner for three open seats. And we've had one person drop out, reduce the field to 13. Two people will not be here tonight to participate, so we have 11 candidates. And what we've decided to do is break it up because of just the logistics, as you can imagine. We'll do six candidates in the first group, five in the second, and we will ask them the same league questions, and then we will have questions from the audience that may vary from group to group, but everyone will have a chance to answer the questions that the league has written. And then, we haven't really formalized plans, but I think what we'll be doing is a voter's guide in writing online. And so, questions, if you submit questions and they haven't been used tonight, we will draw upon them for our online voter's guide. So, no questions will go to waste, so to speak. So, we may consolidate questions tonight just for the ease of getting the information to the voters, get the questions before the candidates. So briefly, the League of Women Voters, we are political, but we are nonpartisan. We don't endorse candidates. We don't get involved in that piece of the process. We do sometimes advocate for certain issues if our study and our consensus leads us to that position, but we are completely nonpartisan. Our attempt here is to help these candidates get their messages to the voters, and help the voters understand the candidate so that on Election Day, which is August 19th for the primary, early voting starts Thursday, they can do it, as we say, "Be informed and vote." And up there in the banner, you can see our email, lvvchyene@gmail.com. And the wyominglw.org is our state league website. That's where these forums will be posted. So, and I will just briefly mention the rebroadcast dates. Again, they're posted there and on the table out front. Okay, they will be for this, for the forum tonight for Commissioner, Saturday, June 12th at 11:00 a.m. Tomorrow, we are having the forum for District Attorney, County Clerk, and Sheriff. And that will be rebroadcast on Sunday, July 13th, also at 11:00 a.m. Then on Thursday, we are having the third of our county election forums, that's the legislative races, all the contested races, not all the races, but the ones that are contested. And that will be rebroadcast on Charter, Channel 19, on Tuesday, July 15th at 6:00 p.m. And again, we will have these posted on our state league website, and so you can go back if you miss something, and you want to go back, or you want to say to a friend, "Please watch this." You know where to go. So, what I'll do is go ahead and just, also, and for the benefit of everyone here, I know the candidates, we've told them, but the way we're organizing it is everybody has a two-minute introduction, and they can use it any way they want to tell about themselves and, hi there, not a problem. And so, we hope that they'll just cover some basics about who they are, why they're running. Then the questions will be, we'll have a minute and a half to answer, and we will have a timer. Debbie Lath, if it's going to be our timer tonight, a league member, and she will hold up cards to show when timing gets down to 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and the shocking pink card is says "Stop." And so, candidates, we hope that you will, out of your periphery, will keep an eye on those cards, so when the time comes that you will stop. And there will be two minutes closing, which can be used, again, any way that candidates want, to sum up, to respond to something else, to cover something that wasn't covered, any way they want those two minutes. And depending on how it goes, I think what I'm going to try to do, if there is time, is to allow, if someone has, after the five have answered, the six have answered, that there, if there's something to respond to a candidate who has said something, a very brief 15-second opportunity. And what I'll do is ask the candidates, if you, if all have had their initial response time, if you do have something you want to add, especially in response to someone else, raise your hand, and we'll give you 15, 20 seconds to go ahead and make that comment. Because with five up there, we have a lot of diversity of views and reactions to each other, and we don't want to lose that in this forum. So, are there any questions? I think it's all been pretty clear as we go along. Okay, thank you. All righty. Oh, and I guess, just to add, the questions from the audience, we have three-by-five cards that league members are passing around. If you have a question, write it down and give it to the league members, and then we will sort through those and consolidate. If two or three are on the same topic, we may ask them together, that side, that sort of thing. And as I mentioned, if we don't get it tonight, we'll try to get to it on the written voter's guide. So, thank you. All right, proceeding with, and I don't have luck of the draw, so we will alternate, beginning with Mr. Hazenauer's on the left, and we'll start with him, and then the next round will start with Mr. Hanson, and so on and so forth. So, starting with Mr. Hazenauer, here's your two-minute introduction statement.
Yes, Margaret, thank you so much for the League of Women Voters having this forum tonight. Some of my objectives for running for County Commissioner is always to get people involved in local government, and the Women League of Voters are doing the same thing here tonight, getting to know the candidates and what our vision is for Laramie County. I'm a constitutional conservative, disciplined conservative. I feel like the two years that I've served as County Commissioner has been a learning curve, but also some things that we put forward that we can hang our hat on. We have always tried to represent the will of the people, and that is to get as many people involved in government, hear what their views are. You know, it's often said, "If we stand up, we're real men," but I think we need to first sit down and listen to the people and understand what the concerns are in Laramie County. We've got a lot of economic development going on. We've got a lot of issues with water restrictions in eastern Laramie County. The two years that I've served here in Laramie County, I think gives me the experience I need to move forward and go for the four-year term. You know, it's a, it's a lot to be said when you've got smaller communities, too, that also need the assistance out there. Be always willing to work with them and give them their fair share and give them what they need. Roads seem to be always an issue for Laramie County, and Public Works does a great job. Yeah, I think if we ever get any more money from the state, we need to allocate it in material, not personnel and not machinery. We need to get our roads graded by allocating that funding for gravel. I think there's a great opportunity and a lot of good things that lie ahead for Laramie County. Thank you, and I appreciate everybody's vote.
Thank you. Mr. Hazenauer, and next, Mr. Art Hanson.
First of all, I apologize for being late. I've got a meeting in Casper. I've got to leave here and be in before 9:30 tonight. But again, I do apologize for being late for the meeting. My purpose in running for County Commissioner, or signing up as a candidate to become a County Commissioner, is singled out last, I ran two years ago. Oh, those of you that know me, know my qualifications, but I really want to help the people, the residents of Laramie County, A, by providing them with three quality candidates that have the knowledge and the people skills to work with the two existing candidates, or two existing commissioners that are still, that are not running currently. A, I feel we've got a lot going on in Laramie County, and working together, five individuals need to work together, got to have diverse ideas, but at the same time, they need to work together over the next four years with all the new things that we do have coming about in Laramie County. I've been known professionally as a facilitator. I worked with all of the candidates the last round, worked together to make it a clean race, and made the best individuals one, and I think we got two very good, well, actually, three very good commissioners in. And the last go-around, there'll be three this time. I do say right up front, I'm a big advocate of Troy Thompson. We'll have two new commissioner, or, we could have three new commissioners, which means we'd have five new commissioners in two years in the county commission. So I do believe that Troy Thompson, first and foremost, should be reelected as a County Commissioner, and based upon that, I believe you, as the voter, should select individuals that can work with Troy, Amber, and Buck over the next two to four years to be able to proceed and prosper in Laramie County.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Kurt Wilson, and thank you for the invite. Can you hear me okay?
I think you have to speak into a microphone in order to be picked up for the recording, so just make sure you're, you have a microphone pretty close.
Okay. All right. My main reason for running for County Commissioner is, as Mr. Hanson, I think we need five commissioners that can work together and make an effective government for this time in Laramie County, that we're building with the oil industry, the mineral industry, and we need to make sure that everything is run effectively. I'll be an advocate for the Laramie County employees. I've worked for Laramie County for 23 years. I still work here, and we have a lot of experience walking out the door, and we need to make that stop. We need to keep these quality people here, working for us, not going somewhere else. Next concern I have is for our public roads with the increased traffic. With the mineral industry, they're really getting overused, and it's tough for Public Works to keep up. So that needs to be addressed. And also on that is, we have a lot of subdivisions in eastern Laramie County. I'm not real familiar with western Laramie County. I mainly work out east, but the subdivisions out there have private roads, and what's going to happen to those when they start putting in oil wells in those areas? Last thing I'd like to talk about is the Laramie County Fair. We've, in two separate places. We need to get that consolidated, get it moved out to Archer. It's an awesome facility, and our children deserve to have their county fair in one place. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Ms. Lummis.
Thank you. I echo what the other candidates have said. My interest in running is because Diane is retiring. There is an open seat, and I would like to have it. I've been behind the scenes for over 45 years politically, working for many candidates, including Diane. We painted her first set of signs in the shop at my dad's. So, I have always been interested, but never upfront. My experience that I could offer comes from working here in government, and I had a business, and a lot of volunteering. I've raised a lot of money for nonprofits in Laramie County. I care about this place, and I would appreciate everyone's consideration when you're voting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Linda Heath, please.
Good evening, Marguerite. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. George Washington didn't ask to become president. He didn't even run to become president. He was, his name was put forward by the public, by his friends, and they continued to put his name forward until finally, he became president. And that's kind of the way it's been for me. Two years ago, in fact, three years ago, I was asked by friends to run, and I had a whole year to think about it before throwing my name in the hat. Following the primary two years ago in 2012, those friends came to me again and said, "Will you please run again?" And, you know, it's a time commitment for the family, and it was something that we really had to stop and think about as to whether or not we wanted to commit to another race. The decision was made to go ahead and do it. I continued doing what I had been doing during the primary season, and that was attending the local meetings, the meetings here at the commissioners' offices, the meetings out in the public, as much as I could possibly attend, have been out in the communities in Alvin and Pine Bluffs and Burns, visiting with the town councils. I know what their issues are out there. Have attended several of the Water District meetings that the State Engineers Office has had. And over that time, I have learned that one of the things that you have to be as a commissioner is you have to be a thinker, a listener, and be able to deliberate on the information that you are given, and you're going to have to listen to both sides of the issue. You can't ignore it. You know, I think it's important that as a commissioner, that you do listen to the people, and you have to abide by what the state statutes say, and sometimes it's difficult to find that line.
Okay, thank you very much. Those were the introductory comments. Now, we're going to move into questions that are going, were composed by committee of the League of Women Voters of Cheyenne. And again, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and start now with Mr. Hanson, as we kind of stagger the process here. And you'll have a minute and a half to answer. Again, our timekeeper will let you know when you're getting close. So, a minute and a half. The first question is, and this, everyone will get this question. What responsibility does the county commission have to plan and regulate development for the benefit of county residents?
They have very large responsibility due to the Planning Department out at the Archer. They've already, I mean, this has been underway. Diane, the crew have already got this established. I used to working, my big concern is working with the people when we have to have changes, when there needs to be changes in plans, but more importantly, a doing, actually doing the planning in advance so that we don't have to go back to the individual residents because they've got grandfather rights and trying to make changes as the city grows. Bottom line. I am a proponent of grandfather rights for all residents in Laramie County, and if there's going to be any changes made that would impact those grandfather rights, that's where really a leader comes into play, a sitting down with the residents, with the county, with the city if they're involved, and actually working out a plan that will accommodate all.
Thank you very much, and I've just had a notice that the name cards are obscuring people's faces, so I'm going to take, give me five seconds to fix it, and then we'll continue there. When I was thinking... Mr. Wilson, I'll go ahead and ask the question again. What responsibility does the county commission have to plan and regulate development for the benefit of county residents? A minute and a half.
I think the commissioners have a huge role to play in economic development. I think we're on the right track. I think that with the Archer complex, the infrastructure that was put in out there was a good move, and I feel that the commission should continue on with getting businesses interested in moving to Laramie County, so we can keep our young folks here in Laramie County working. With that, though, I think the commissioners need to make sure that this development is controlled to protect everyone's personal and property rights. Back to the roads, where we're allowing these subdivisions to come in, and we're taking the taxes off of all these new homes and everything, and the roads are private, left up for those individuals to maintain. That needs to be fixed. And I think it's an exciting time, and we have a lot to look forward to, and I think it'll be a fun, fun time the next 10, 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lummis, would you like to have the question repeated? Okay, a minute and a half. Thank you.
Planning is crucial. I advocate it within the existing laws. I don't think we need more laws. I don't think we need to have our thumb on people, but we do have to plan. Laramie County's really growing. If you drive around, it's surprising. Something going on weekly, seemingly. Take a look at everything south of Fox Farm Road. That is a prime example of land that several years ago was just modest homes, and, my word, it's amazing. I'm in agreement with the other two gentlemen. I feel like I just need to say ditto. We do have to be concerned about roads and how we're going to accommodate these people as the subdivisions are taken into the county. How is the county going to deal with it, with the demands that county roads put forward? But yes, planning is crucial.
Thank you. Ms. Heath, would you like me to repeat the question, or, okay, thank you. Minute and a half.
Yeah, the commission cannot control how people divide their land, and when they're presented with a subdivision plan, they are charged with enforcing the regulations that are in the comprehensive plan that has been put together with the Planning Department. The commissioners are also charged with protecting the private property rights of all individuals, developer, and neighbors alike. As far as zoning is concerned, the only place that I feel that we need zoning is here within the five-mile limit around Cheyenne. We have a denser population, therefore you have a far more likelihood that you are going to have conflicts between neighbors as to how land is used. You have industrial possibilities. You have high, medium-density possibilities. These things all have to be worked out within a zoning plan. As far as the county is concerned, I don't think that's a battle that the commissioners want to fight in putting zoning out in the county.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hazenauer.
Yeah, planning's important as long as it's done at the local level. It's when you take federal funding that they have the strings attached and the regulations that go along with it. Private property rights are king here. The founding forefathers said, "If you would own a piece of America, then you will love America." And you will respect your neighbor's rights, too, because they have them also. So protecting our property rights is king in any planning, and I think Laramie County's working toward getting a great planning department out there with a couple of new hires. Their responsibility is to getting building permits out as quick as they can and make it less burden on our residents who are trying to build in Laramie County. We also need a plan that protects our western heritage. We want people to come here and assimilate in what we are, not change us to what some other state wants us to be. But the plan has to include our western heritage and how we are as a community. Plans are important, but they need to be our plans, and we need to grow on our terms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, does anyone want to add anything to responding to what any other candidate has said? Raise your hand, and you'll have a couple of seconds to do that. Nope? All right, we'll move on to the second question, and thank you. Do you favor, and this will be starting with Mr. Wilson, do you favor further development at the Archer complex now, or later, or at all? You've kind of already addressed this, but maybe you can formalize it. Should development include an exhibition hall that could be used for the county fair and other events? How would it be funded? Explain.
Yes. I think we have a great thing going with the Archer complex, where it was designed to place businesses out there. I think that should continue. It's in the county. I like that. It's further east. I like that. That's where my priorities lie, for the most part, right now. As far as the exhibition hall is a must, I feel. I was out and visited with Mr. Ketchum a couple of weeks ago. They have taken their plan from, I believe it was $21 million, down to 7.3 to build a new facility out there, along with the landscaping. It's a beautiful concept. I really like it. It puts all the fair in one spot at one time. And it gets kind of confusing for people I've talked to over the years, where you have the shooting sports at one time, and Dog Show at another, and the Horse Show at another, and In Frontier Days. And I think we can take it out of the original budget as long as it's looked at correctly, and I'm not against revisiting the sixpenny for the Archer complex. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Lummis, where do you stand on the Archer complex question?
Absolutely must do. The master plan out there is perfect. I love it. I advocate it, not only for the fair, which is extremely needed. Mr. Wilson is absolutely 100% right. It needs to be done. I think that the other events that could be using that fairgrounds are limitless. So many groups in Cheyenne are looking for a place to have things, and there's already a lot going on out there of the groups that have found it and found it to be workable for them and affordable. I really think that completing the fairgrounds is essential. I look at it as a community place, not just a fairgrounds. In some ways, calling it a fairgrounds limits it, if you know where I am here. In some counties, rural counties, you can get people to donate buildings. That's a possibility. The sixpenny is also a possibility. You'd have to resell it again, but I highly advocate completing the county fair.
Thank you. Ms. Heath.
Yes, to the first two questions, yes, I support the Archer complex and building an exhibit hall out there. I also believe that it has a lot of potential to be a great asset to this community for economic development, as well as for varying events that the community could hold out there. For instance, an inside graduation place for Central, East, and South, as well as a larger location for LCCC. As far as the funding is concerned for the grounds out there and building the, moving the fair out there, I would look at sale of property. There's already been some property that's been sold, and that money's been set aside. That could be used out there as a possibility. We could look at the sale of the land that the county owns up at Frontier Days grounds as another little addition to the kitty. We could look at grants. We can look at sponsorships through corporations, private donations as well. The county needs to get some skin in the game, and as a last resort, the sixpenny tax. The county needs to get some skin in the game, and as a last resort, the sixpenny tax.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hazenauer?
Yes, the development out at the Archer is already underway. We currently have the gun range, the public works, the sheriff's department, impound lot, the juvenile center. We're talking about putting a C and G gas plant out there. A lot of things are going on already. As far as the fair moving out there, absolutely yes, but we have to have a plan that not only builds the building and the nut and bolts building, but what is going to be the operating cost per year? I'm not in favor for anything if it doesn't have a plan to figure out how we're going to pay for it year to year. So it has to be a multi-use building. We have sold some other property that could be an avenue, but I think it comes down to the naming rights. A big business that's here, if they wanted to put their name over the building and help fund that project, that's the way it's going to be built. Also, the $800,000 we give for Archer was a great investment, and now we have property that we can sell that's outside the circle limits of what we've already taken. Some of that property sale can be used to fund the fair moving out there. I'm in favor of it because state statute backs it up, and it is for Laramie County kids. So as long as we're doing it with common sense and being fiscally conservative, I'm in favor of it.
All right. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, I'm definitely in favor of the Archer, both personally but because of the residents in the county. There again, though, if there's any funding that's going to come from the sixpenny, it's got to be up to the voters, and that's where marketing comes in. You know, we have Jeff out there. It's his job to aggressively market, not only for the benefit, using the funds from the sixpenny, but also from vendors. I personally was the facilitator for the initial, the first platinum sponsor to Cheyenne Frontier Days. There's over $400,000 a year spent out there just for Frontier Days from one of our local banks. Aggressive marketing with Jeff F. and his group, if they really got after the program as far as the follow-up upon the program and the backup step, I am in favor of not downsizing what is the master plan out there. We spent good money to actually determine what was needed. And had it been properly presented to the public in a proper format and not in competition with other projects, had it been laid out a little bit better, I believe it would have passed, and therefore it's the follow-up, the maintenance on it. And that's where it comes through, again, through sponsorship, through marketing, and that can be done through proper planning.
Thank you. Does anyone want to add anything to what's been said? Respond? Yes, 15 seconds.
Yeah, we've already got a semantic design, and it came back to $6 million first phase. It wasn't the $22 million project that we were going to put on the ballot in, you know, I think it was 2010 that it was voted down. I'm in favor of building the fair but not putting it on the backs of the taxpayers. We have to come up with some naming rights and use some of the funding from the building and the property out to Frontier Days Park to get it out there. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. And now we'll begin with Ms. Lummis with this question. Would you favor some means of requiring energy companies to maintain and improve county roads impacted by energy development?
If allowable by state law. And I have to tell you, I am not familiar with the state law regarding that, but I really advocate doing what we're supposed to do by state law. Some years ago, I was privileged to be one of two people that went to Niobrara County to run their treasurer's office when the office was left empty. And we had to go up there and take over, see if there were any losses, balance everything, run the office, wait for a new person to be appointed, and train her. How did we do that? We put the statutes on a table in the back, and we read them sometimes 10 times a day. Follow the statutes. If the state will allow us to do that, yes. If the state won't allow us to do that, then I'm not sure what recourse the county would have.
All righty, thank you. Ms. Heath? County Roads and Energy.
Yeah, many of those energy companies already have road use agreements with the county. It's in their best interest to take care of those roads, and it also makes for good fences with the neighbors, so to speak. You know, one of the things that the county fights with our roads is that it's supported by the mineral severance tax. And when you look at the requirements or what the law reads as far as statutes in Wyoming is concerned, that mineral severance tax could be as much as two years from coming into the county from oil that was pumped today. And so when you look at the impact on our roads today, our mineral severance tax, as it is dispersed to the counties, is not going to help us with our problem today. So it's in the best interest of those energy companies to come up with a road use agreement so that they can help keep their product going to market as well as keeping their neighbors happy.
Thank you. Mr. Hazenauer?
Yeah, we've got a bang going on in Laramie County with the oil industry, but thank God we're becoming energy independent as a country. We want to step back and out of the road so they can do that. But if it becomes a boom, that could change things. The road use leases agreements that we have now, they pay some fair share of the tax. You know, roads are a bad issue when you've got nine inches of rain in September and 135% snowpack like we had this year. And a lot of these trucks are using public roads that the county has to maintain. So if we get anything more from the state, it has to be, again, allocated earmarked for material, not for personnel and not for machinery so we can keep up with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Well, to put it in simple terms, I think Diane and Troy, and I believe it was Jeff back then, started the process of setting up agreements with oil companies, and the process is underway. I think it needs to be reviewed from time to time. I aim to see if, in fact, we're getting the maximum bang for our buck, the maximum dollar from these companies, because we do have companies in and out rather quickly. So again, through proper planning and following up what was already done by Diane and Troy, I think we can get at the additional, we can get additional funding for the roads. And like Linda said, you know, the funds that come from the oil is down the road ways, but it will be here, and it will help on roads. So it's, I think they're doing a good job currently in assessing and collecting additional fees for roads, but there's always room for improvement.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I agree that we continue on with what has been going on. It's, was set up already. And I've been working with these individuals for the last several years in my law enforcement capacity. What I have found, the horror stories we heard a few years ago about North Dakota, that's not happening here. These folks are very cooperative. They want to come in here. They want to do their job. They're just like us. And as long as we continue to be fair with them and visit with them and let them know our expectations, I don't see any problems at all.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the fourth question from the league, and we'll see how much time is left, and then we'll move to questions from the audience here. Regarding the fifth penny, and this will be starting with Ms. Heath. Regarding the fifth penny, should the county be more transparent with the public before the election in the projects to be funded and accounting for the collections and spending afterwards?
Yeah, I think the county does a very good job right now of being transparent with their fifth penny because they were right up front. They say so much is going to roads, so much is going to public works, so much is going to the library, so much is going here. And so if, all you have to do is to find out what the amount that's been collected on the fifth penny, and you can do the percentage work yourself and figure out how much is going where. The fifth penny has become a very vital part of the budget as far as many of our departments is concerned, and it's something that I believe that we need to continue on supporting. If we didn't have that fifth penny, 68% of our public works fund would go away. If we're having problems with our roads, imagine taking 68% of the fifth penny away from our roads now. You know, the library is another one of those areas that receives money. Our law enforcement receives money out of that fifth penny, and they use it for their vehicles. You know, it's a very important part of the county budget.
Thank you. Mr. Hazenauer?
Yeah, being transparent is also some personal responsibility to voters to get involved with the system and find out where your fifth penny money's going. Like Linda said, 68% goes to roads. We definitely see that as a need and not a want. Sometimes, fifth penny projects, you know, I'm not so vocal on, I'm not big on taxes, but I do feel that you have the right to go to the polls and decide whether you want this tax or not. There was some discussion that since it passes by such a large margin, that we just do it by resolution. I would stand up against that. I want the people to have a chance to vote on it every time and decide their own destiny on the fifth penny tax. We do need to spend it more wisely, too. But every time we talk about, "Well, we need more money for roads this year," 69%, then the big question is, who are you going to face and say, "Your department has to take 1% less"? That's always the tough way with it. But it is up to the voters here to vote it in. It is the county commissioner's job to spend it wisely.
Mr. Hanson?
As far as the transparency, I think Deb Lathrippe does an absolutely awesome job of providing information to the public whenever they go down there, and it is very transparent. The percentages, as everyone has already said, is locked in, and a little bit that's left for miscellaneous projects are noted in the minutes. If, I mean, if the residents of Laramie County actually wanted more transparency placed in the paper at an expense or put it online if they wanted it that way, then I haven't anybody asked me for that. But if they did, then it's our responsibility to provide that service to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I haven't had anybody visit with me about the fifth penny at all. I think it's very popular with our county, just from the results of the last election on it. I think that transparency-wise, it is, I mean, I don't know what more we could do to put that information out there. What concerns me, I'm not big on taxes. The fifth penny, when it came along, was called an optional tax. Well, it's no longer optional. Can we do away with 68% of our public works budget? Absolutely not. We'd crash. So I think we need to have the commission watching this very closely to make sure that the sixth penny doesn't go down the same road the fifth penny has.
Thank you. Ms. Lummis?
This is an easy one. I have no problems with the transparency. I've never heard any complaints about it. I've never had any complaints about it, and everyone's answer on this call or this board tonight is correct. I think that we are very open in county government.
Thank you. And does anyone have anything to add in light of anyone's answers? All righty. At this point, we'll go to some questions from the audience, and we don't have many. So if you have that burning question, now is the time to bring it forward, and we'll try to get it answered now or on our voter's guide. So let me see, there was one that came up early. And I guess, since we'll sort of repeat, I guess Mr. Hazenauer would be the first one for this one. What is your vision for county employees?
We have some of the best county employees in the nation. They provide a service to get out everything that has been asked and put on them. We are, though, approaching close to $20 million in personnel cost. I think it's raised from 18,2, and it's closing in on $20 million personnel cost. That's a concern of mine. If we continue to give the raises, then we got to continue to find some sort of funding. Right now, we're doing well. It was five or six years ago that we were not doing well, and there was a hire and freeze. So our employees are great. We ask a lot of them. They do a wonderful job. Public Works for Anstus was working some seven days a week for two weeks straight trying to get roads repaired back in February when the flooding was occurring. These are great employees. They deserve a pat on the back. I really appreciate our employees in Laramie County.
Mr. Hanson?
I've managed hundreds of offices, thousands of employees for 28 years. And in my experience working with everybody over the last two and a half years while getting involved in the county commission, I learned rather quickly that the employees of Laramie County work very hard, and they're underpaid, bottom line. It's not a matter of how much they make or how big the budget is. As one of my lead principles is lean. You work, you actually improve efficiency to increase productivity. And by doing that, you release funds, make funds available that was never available before. If the commission had worked more diligently on providing the funds or working with the funds to make it available, that money would be available for raises. I think the current commission did an excellent job in setting up a structured raise process, actually getting one initiated. I know it had been tried for years past to try and figure out ways. And currently, there is a way to give more income to the existing employees, and it's staggered out to where it should continue. And it's up to the commissioners to actually make that money available to serve the needs of the county employees.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
When I first announced, I was running for county commissioner, and I said that I was for the employees and that we need to take care of the employees. Everybody thought that my main goal was to get a raise. I've been here for 23 years. I'm not going anywhere. If I do, it's going to be retirement. Right now, at the sheriff's department, we have 13 pay levels with about $40 in between each level. That's ridiculous. It should be reassessed, looked at, and so that these younger people that have less time have a reason to stay in Laramie County. Not old guys like me, because I've been here. I'm not going anywhere. So it's not all just about money. If we treat our people like they make a difference, guess what? They will.
Thank you. Ms. Lummis?
I agree with that. I was a county employee also. The biggest problem that I saw when I was working for the county was no communication. I promise the county employees an open door.
Thank you.
We have great county employees. They work hard, and many times they're selfless in the time that they give. I think that the plan to go to the merit pay is a great idea. Those employees who are really busting their butts and working hard every day need to be awarded. I think the communication is a good idea, not just a good idea, it's a must, an absolute must. And it's not just you can come to my office, but I can come to yours, and we can sit down and we can talk about what's going on. And I think that's an absolute must, and above all, we need to treat them with respect.
Thank you. And anyone want to, a brief response time? Yes.
Yeah, I have given merit pay raises, and I've given critical position raises. Sometimes we have to have an identification of the qualification of the job, and there is great employees out there that deserve a move up if they are producing a lot for Laramie County. And that is, that comes and falls under that merit pay, which I'm in favor of.
All righty, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. There, I'll say quite frankly, there are a few questions that pertain to particularly one of the candidates up there, Mr. Hazenauer, but about decorum and how you treat departments and divisions of the county government, making sure you treat them with respect and uses the word bullying. But what I would like to do, instead of zeroing in on one candidate, and some of you referenced it in your opening comments about decorum and the behavior and how you would relate as board members to the other departments of the county government. You set their budgets, and you do have quite a bit of authority. How would you relate to them? How would you relate to your fellow board members? So I know that's kind of on the fly, sort of adapting this, but it is a question that apparently there's some interest in. So I guess, Mr. Hanson, if that's, you know, do you understand the question? Just it's a- So I guess, Mr. Hanson, if that's, you know, do you understand the question, just it's, yeah, relating to others?
Well, being respectful of the current commission and everything that's going on, I'd just like to say that I truly believe that the individuals that become commissioners should have the knowledge and should have the people skills. We shouldn't have to send them to school for people skills. That's something that should come as a prerequisite, as a qualification. And if we've got, if we have an issue there, that's something that needs to be addressed. And this time around, that's what the residents, being able to vote, is all about, is being able to choose three individuals that will work with the current individuals and show respect for the employees of Laramie County, but also show respect for the voters. They've got to have the skill and the knowledge base to do so. So, you know, like I've said to many people, this isn't about me. This is about the residents of Laramie County, and this is about the voters making a decision as to who they want to lead, actually, which individual has leadership skills to be able to lead and show respect to all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, we need five commissioners that can work together, get along, and move forward. And we do need strong leadership, somebody that can compromise on issues and work with the other four commissioners for the benefit of this county. As far as it comes to the departments, or the different departments, well, there shouldn't really be in a commissioner's mind, you know, this department, that department, because everybody in the county works for those five commissioners. And they all should be looked at equally and treated equally.
Thank you. Ms. Lummis?
You're both right. I'm on the Board of Trustees at Laramie County Community College, a very diverse group. We determined, in just our private conversations, one for all and all for one. You have to make your decisions as a group, irregardless of how you feel about other people. And you're there for the institution. You're not there for yourself. You're not there for any personal agenda. You're there to run the county. That means everything and everybody in the county.
Thank you. Ms. Heath?
This is a question we could discuss and talk about all night long, I think. I said earlier that if I am elected, my door is open, and I would be willing to come down and talk to the county employees. The county employees do work for the commissioners, but they also work for the people of Laramie County. They're the ones that deal with the residents of Laramie County on a daily basis. And as such, they deserve respect. You know, this morning, I had a thought as I was getting ready for tonight, and I was humbled by the thought that tonight, instead of sitting out there where you are, I would be sitting up here looking at you. You know, this is a seat of power up here, and what the commissioners do up here affects everybody in Laramie County. And I respect the office of the county commissioners and what they do. And if I can respect the office, I can respect the employees and the residents of Laramie County as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hazenauer?
Yeah, you don't take seventy-six hundred signatures for a petition drive unless you're friendly, you're honest, and you're approachable. I smile. I don't have a cuss word in my mouth, but I still tell them no sometimes. As a commission board, we can't all say yes, yes, yes to everything. There's going to be some disagreements. But I have learned over the last two years to have more respect for those that disagree with me than ever thought I could. I really appreciate the board that we have, and I appreciate the opportunity to express my points of view, too. And sometimes, those points get heated. But when we're behind this diocese, Emily Hazenauer has a hundred percent record of being here to vote on the issues that matter most to Laramie County. Do I love our employees? Yes. I love people because I'm a people person. Thank you.
Does anyone want to add anything to that, or respond, or add to what their comments? Okay. Well, that concludes the questions part of this, and we'll have two-minute closing from everyone. Thank you for coming. If I don't have a chance to thank you at the end, and I will re-announce those broadcast dates. And since we started with Mr. Hanson just now, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Wilson. It's a two-minute summing up. Everyone will have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. As I've told you at the beginning, I've worked here for Laramie County for twenty-three years, and I've decided that, well, I've reached my goal in law enforcement in my time, and now I'd like to continue to serve as a county commissioner. I do bring to the table a lot of leadership experience, my twenty-three years with the Army National Guard, to include leadership experience in Iraq in a combat situation. Worked well under pressure. I've been doing it a long time. And I appreciate your vote, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lummis?
Thanks for having us. It is an important time in our country, and it trickles down to here locally. I also care about this county, or I wouldn't be here. Going through this isn't exactly fun. I'm really glad the voting starts on Thursday. But it is a process, and we would not be here putting ourselves out to all of you if we didn't care, if we didn't want the job, if we weren't willing to do the job and go through this process. So I give to you my good name, all the experience I've got working and volunteering in Laramie County, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Heath?
I kind of alluded to my closing a little bit ago. I've been struck with the responsibility of what the commission does, and it would indeed be an honor from the voters to be elected to the position of commissioner. But with that honor comes great responsibility, and if I am elected, that will always be in the forefront of my mind. I have learned to be deliberate in my decision-making in many ways over the last two years and considering various viewpoints. I'm a small business owner, and I understand the challenges that small businesses face every day. I support the constitutions of the United States and Wyoming, and I will be an advocate for personal responsibility, not expecting government to solve all of our problems. That in itself will help to keep government smaller. I've been deliberate in learning how the process of county government works over the past two years and have begun to develop relationships with those people that I would be working with. And I realize that there will be differing opinions as we sit across the table, but we can work on our common goals and discuss those differing opinions later. That same goes for the voters who would elect me to office if I am elected. Again, it's a completely new experience to sit on this side of the dais. That railing is quite a divider in many ways. You will be loaning me the power as a commissioner if I am elected. I promise to respect that, whether you're a county employee or whether you're a resident of Laramie County. I appreciate your support and hope that you will vote for me in the primary beginning this week.
Thank you. Mr. Hazenauer?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity always to speak to the true bosses of Laramie County. This is a people's government, and this is a government that you participate in to get as much out of it as you can. That's been my goal all along. As a nation, we have not become a superpower, and we ain't the greatest nation ever in the history of earth because of what government's done. It's using our freedom, our initiatives, our passion, our desires, our values, our morality. This is what made us the greatest nation on the earth, the face of the earth. It'll be conservative leadership you'll get. It'll be constitutional, and it'll be following the black letter of the law. And we have to add the common sense. That's what solves the problems, and that is the solution for Laramie County. I don't know everybody's position up here all the way, just in a few minutes of debate, but it's Emily Hazenauer for sure. Please vote for me, 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
Again, thank all of you, actually, for sitting there, taking the time to listen to us and taking an interest in our government. You know, we, we're neighbors. We're all neighbors. We're all residents of Laramie County, and we're all voters. And all I'm asking you is to take a good, hard look and choose three individuals that will work together with the two existing ones. But more importantly, when you leave here, talk to your neighbor. Talk to your friends. Get the communication going about getting a level of interest on who's actually going to be leading your county, so it's not just up to a bunch of signs on the road with names on them, that people take the time to take a look at all these individuals. We've got some great candidates out here on the floor, up here on the podium, you know? It's a matter of choosing three individuals that will work together and will serve you as residents of Laramie County and take good care of your neighbors. So thanks a bunch.
And I couldn't have said it better. As the league says, be informed and vote. If you have more questions for these candidates, I'm sure they'll make themselves available to you. And again, we will follow up with an online voter's guide. If you have questions that you want to submit, you'd like to submit to the candidates, lwvcheyenne@gmail.com, and we will certainly accept questions. And again, we may edit and consolidate, but we'd sure like to hear from you. And just real briefly, this forum will be rebroadcast Saturday, July 12th, at 11:00 a.m. Tomorrow night, we have a forum for three county offices, district attorney, county clerk, and sheriff. And then on Thursday, we'll follow with legislative races that will be on your ballot here in Laramie County. And to conclude, I'd like to give the candidates, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Marguerite, I'd just like to say, you were a candidate two years ago. You were part of the big team, and I wanted to say thank you for you staying involved, you staying aware, and you actually working with the Legal Women Voters and making this available for everybody. Thanks a bunch.
Well, thank you. And thanks the candidates for coming. Thank you very much. Okay, and, well, we'll try to convene the next
See you later, Emily.
And then if there are any
Got to go, Kessler.
Drive it.
A little crowded. Good job.
Audience questions may vary, but the league has set up prepared questions. We'll make sure we ask the same ones of the two groups so that voters can compare. And the, as I just mentioned, we're looking for people to send in their questions or bring them up to the podium. If you have other questions that you really have, want answered tonight, and you don't get to them, or you're listening, streaming online, you can send them in to lwvcheyenne@gmail.com, and we may use them in our online voter's guide. So we're looking to help voters, as it says, be informed and vote. And so we have up at the podium a second five. We had before the first five group, and just a couple of housekeeping things. This is sponsored by the League of Women Voters, although the county very generously has made this facility available to us. It's a great facility, and with the streaming capacity. We will also be making the forums available on our website for the State League of Women Voters, which is www.yoaminglvw.org. In addition, Charter Communications is going to rebroadcast these on Channel 19, and those rebroadcast dates are. For this, county commissioner will be rebroadcast Saturday, this Saturday, July 12th, at 11:00 a.m. Tomorrow, we will have live the forum for district attorney, county clerk, and sheriff, and those will be rebroadcast on Sunday, July 13th, at 11:00 a.m. Then on Thursday, we'll have the forum for legislative races in Laramie County, the contested races. And that will be rebroadcast on Channel 19, Tuesday, July 15th, at 6:00 p.m. So you have many opportunities to see and refer this to friends. The voting starts on Thursday, so early voting, and the primary is August 19th. The Legal Women Voters, briefly, is a group that we work to get people, help people be informed and get involved in their government. We are political, but we're completely nonpartisan. We never support individual candidates, although on occasion, we'll advocate for an issue. Just let you know, this fall, we will have what's called a pro-con flyer, which we put out for ballot issues. There will be a constitutional amendment on the ballot, and we're preparing something on that. It will be just what it says, the pro and the con. We'll find an advocate and a con, and we'll put it out there for you. And anything else? As I said before, if you have a question for league, lwvcheyenne@gmail.com. And also, I'll just mention that on July 28th and 29th, we're going to have forums for three statewide offices. On the 28th, we'll have a forum right here at 5:30 for Secretary of State. We have all but one of the candidates appearing for that, followed by Superintendent of Public Instruction. We have all four candidates showing up for that. On the 29th, we're going to have a gubernatorial forum, and we have all candidates lined up except for Superintendent Hill, and she's having trouble clearing her schedule to make that date available. We hope she can do that. But in any case, we'll have the other candidates. Again, they'll be streamed live, available on the website, and we'll see about a rebroadcast on those. So thank you. And again, we encourage you to write down your questions tonight. And with that, I think we'll start out. Just to reiterate, we'll open with two minutes each. To use any way you want, talk about your campaign, to introduce yourself to the public. The questions that prepared by the league, and then from the audience, a minute and a half to respond. We will do it on a staggered basis, starting, moving down the line there. And then if you have something to add or to comment on another answer, raise your hand, and we'll give you fifteen, twenty seconds to do that. Closing with two minutes each to sum up, cover an issue that hasn't been covered, use any way you want. So with that, we'll go ahead and begin. And I've mentioned also, my name is Marguerite Herman, and I'll be moderating the forum tonight. And we'll go ahead and begin with Mr. Kessler. You have two minutes to opening statement.
Well, first of all, Van, I'd like to sell you back an S. There was one too many of my names, so I cut it out.
Oh, I was wondering. Boy, that is handy. You being your X-acto knife? Thank you. Sorry about that.
And you're right, Linda, it's cool up here. But anyway, I'd like to thank the Legal Women Voters for the opportunity to participate today. My name is Rick Kessler, and as you know, I'm a candidate for one of the spots on the Board of County Commissioners. You know, my family's lived in Laramie County for over a century, and I'm also a lifelong resident. I'm retired from the Wyoming Department of Transportation, where I manage their outdoor advertising program and their specific service signing program. And I've been actively involved in the community for many years through Cheyenne Frontier Days, where I was chairman of the Board of Directors. And I recently completed a term with Visit Cheyenne, also as chairman of the board. You know, I believe that Laramie County's on the verge of some exciting times, but we also face some challenges. So I believe that if we, as county commissioners, develop positive partnerships with the city of Cheyenne, the town of Pine Bluffs, Burns, and Alben, as well as with residents of the county, we can meet those challenges head-on. I won't tell you that I have all the answers, because I don't, but I can certainly tell you that if I don't know an answer, I'll take my time and do all I can to find one. I'm from Laramie County, and I'm for Laramie County, and I'm ready to go to work for you as one of your county commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Marguerite. My name is Troy Thompson. I am running for reelection for Laramie County Commission. My family moved to Laramie County when I was ten years old. I have been a Laramie County resident ever since. Graduated from Seton Catholic High School in 1989. Went to Cornell University, got a degree in animal science. Went to Washington State University, got my doctorate of veterinary medicine. I'm married to Beth McNamee from Pine Bluffs. Together, we have eight kids between the two of us. I am a veterinarian, and I'm a small business owner. I have owned Tri-State Veterinary Clinic since 1999. It's been a tremendous opportunity and a tremendous honor to serve as your county commissioner, and I am asking for your support in my reelection. And I'm asking for that support, not just based on my ideas and my thoughts, but based far far more importantly on my experience and my voting record over the past four years. I think if you look at our voting record, you will see that I'm the candidate that doesn't just talk about private property rights. I consistently vote in favor of private property rights. I'm a candidate that doesn't just talk about economic development. I consistently vote in favor of economic development, leading Laramie County forward in a positive direction. And I think you'll see that I'm a candidate that doesn't just talk about the small businessman. I consistently vote in favor of the small businessman. The small businessman, that's the backbone of our economy. I am a small businessman. I understand the struggles. And I know that we don't want government getting in the way of the small businessman. Make no mistake, it's remarkably important, the decision that we get to make on August 19th, who's going to lead Laramie County. And I would ask you, before you make that decision, please, do your homework. Look at our education, look at our experience, look at our voting record, and then choose who's best qualified to lead Laramie County. Again, my name is Troy Thompson, and with your support, I'll continue to be the commissioner that makes intelligent, rational decisions based on honest family values. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
Thank you. My name's Mark Woods, and I'm not very good at this. I'm not a very good politician, but I would make a very good county commissioner. I've lived here all my life. My children are sixth-generation Laramie County residents and natives. I've owned and operated a couple of different businesses over the last 15 years. They're still both in business, and they've been successful. I know what I'm doing when it comes to business. My interest in running for this position is to help Laramie County to become more open and inviting to businesses, to people, to development. I'd like to make Laramie County a place that my children, when they grow, will want to stay here. When they're ready to leave the home, I'd like them to go ahead and leave the home, but I'd like them to stay in Laramie County. My experience with planning, building, and development, I think, will be a great asset in helping me to achieve this goal for the county. So, I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
Yes, I'm Larry Spear. You know, we're all running for county commissioner. I have no experience with politics, and one of my slogans is, I'm not a politician, I'm a citizen. I've been a citizen of Laramie County all my life, born and raised here. With my job in law enforcement, I haven't been involved in politics. To be quite honest with you, I'm looking for a simpler way to run government. If I can come up, or if I understand how it works, then it's got to be simple and it's going to work a lot better. Everybody will understand it. I'm for a very open government. I don't like a lot of thumbs. I don't like a lot of fingers in the pie. I'd just like it to move nice and smooth. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Beetle.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us tonight. My name is David Beetle. I'm fifth-generation Wyoming native. I'm a small businessman, been one for 40 years. I'm running mainly because I think that Laramie County needs a change. I think the commissioners that we have have done a failed job, but I'm here to try and change a few things. I'm not going to promise nothing. I'm for the people and with the people. The only thing I can do is tell you I have an open-doal policy. I've been doing it a long time. I get along with people most of the time. And I try to put the feelings of the people that I'm working for in front of me and not use my own. Thank you. I'd like your vote at the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Well, so we'll go ahead and start the questions with Mr. Thompson. The first question from the Legal Women Voters is, what responsibility does the county commission have to plan and regulate development for the benefit of county residents?
Marguerite, I think our responsibility is twofold. We've got a responsibility to the people that live in Laramie County, that have lived here for their whole lives, for generations. And then we've also got a responsibility to the people that want to relocate here, whether that be for private residents or whether that be for business. And then I think our responsibility also lies in the fact that we need to have a plan, a plan for growth, a plan for development, and then we need to have rules and regulations. And that's what we've got here in Laramie County. We have got a plan, and we have got land use regulations. And we do not want to be overburdened some on business. We don't want to be overburdened some on people coming here. But we do want to be able to protect the private property rights of those that live here. So, it's crucial, and our responsibility lies twofold. Having that plan, having those regulations, and then working within those regulations to get things done.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
You know, I think the role of this board is huge in development. I think that it should be one of the primary goals of any of us that are running, to encourage development, to come to Laramie County, to encourage development that is already occurring in Laramie County, or that potentially will occur in Laramie County. I agree with Mr. Thompson, we do need to have some rules and regulations, although I believe right now that we actually have a few too many of those. And I think that some of them are rather redundant and rather onerous on those that want to do some business in Laramie County. And I would like to see us take a look at some of those and maybe change some of that. I think that the commissioner's job should be to work together with an organization like Cheyenne Leads, which goes out and pulls people from other areas into our county. But I also think that we need to really work with those that have been here and have roots firmly established here. And I think the commission's job is to help those businesses and those individuals grow and change as well.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Spear.
When I first started thinking about this, running for commissioner, I looked around to try to find just what a commissioner did, and it was very hard. I mean, there was a lot of places I looked that people would go, no, I'm not sure, might try this office. Since I have been doing this, I have found out that the workload for the commissioners phenomenal. What anybody sees right here is very short as to what goes on back there. The homework that has to be done, the studying, and all of the responsibility. The main responsibility for me is the welfare of the county resident. You've got to balance the need for growth with how it will impact, not just today, not just tomorrow, but next year and the year after. And that takes a lot of work, a lot of study, and willing to put the time in. I believe a slow, continuous growth, allowing the county utilities to keep up, as I said before and prior, the roads, law enforcement, utilities, it's all that important, and it takes a tremendous amount of study and work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beetle.
Well, as a county commissioner, I would kind to think that we need to take care of the city and the county and the outgoing cities with us, with property rights and their independence of being their own people. I think that there is too much regulations that we are doing. I think the program that's outlaid right now probably needs a little work on it. I think the people in the city and the county needs to work together to have growth, for a certain amount of growth. I'm for the small business people. The big people that come in here, we loan them money, they stick around a couple of years and they leave. We have the same problem with the airport. Cut down our trees and start again. And I'm not for that. I'm for the small business people that's going to hire our children and keep us updated with our times. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Kessler.
I think all the candidates are right. Planning is a big part of the county commissioner's job. I think it should be done in a way that promotes quality growth, and I think we've got a good start on that with the business parks that have been developed in the county. I think it should be done in a way that protects the health and safety of our residents, and it should also protect the tradition, history, and culture of Laramie County. And while you're doing that, look to the future and also develop new traditions, history, and culture.
Thank you. And does anyone want to offer any response or comment at this point? Not, fine. We'll move on to the next question. And Mr. Woods, you'll be the first one. Do you favor further development at the Archer complex, now, later, at all? Should development include an exhibition hall that could be used for the county fair and other events? How would it be funded?
That's a tough question for me, and I was pondering it as I heard it the first time. It's difficult for me, because while I do favor what we've done at Archer, initially, I was not in favor of the development out at Archer. I was not in favor of the county spending the money on the land, nor was I in favor of them putting forth so much money into the buildings and the infrastructure out there. I do believe that if the voters say that they want a fair out there, and they want to put that, I guess, if it's on the sixpenny, if they want to do that, then I'm all for it. If the voters say they want to do it, then I'm all for it. I would love to have it. But I have to agree with Emily when he had talked about funding in the future. I mean, really, sometimes the easiest part is the initial outlay. After that, it's coming up with the money that we have to take care of it, year after year after year. I would love to find a way to do that. I don't have that answer, and I'm not sure really that anybody does right now. But I would like to, I'd like to see Archer develop further privately. I would like to see us sell a lot of those lots to commercial and private organizations and generate some money like that for the counties.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
As was said earlier, I went out and met with Mr. Ketchum, and he took me on a tour, showed me what was planned, and I think it's a great project. I would like to see the county fair out there. I would like to see the other plans come about. They're not just centered for the fair only. I mean, there could be numerous other events held out there and draw in a vast array of people and projects. Again, coming up with the money, that's always the big problem. We all do that in our families. There's a lot of things we'd like to have. It's coming up with the money. And like Mr. Woods said, you know, when I started out on horses, the horse was the cheapest thing I bought. It's everything afterwards, it gets expensive to maintain and keep up. I don't have an answer for that either. Again, if the people want it, and it's the sixth penny, then we can work it out, and I, myself, am for development of the Archer complex.
Thank you. Mr. Beetle.
Well, I think the Archer project was a good idea when we started it, and now it's starting to cost money. I don't think you're going to get the failed people to move out there. They're too set in their ways. They've been over 100 years at the way they're at now. The facility is a nice facility. We have a lot of money wrapped up in it. If we can't seem to go ahead with it, or the people don't want to go ahead with it, I would be in favor of finding somebody else that will run it and us collect the money. We have not done a real good job on running that. And personally, the people I talk to, the ranchers and that, they don't like it out there. They want the old fairgrounds. They want to keep everything where they're familiar with. So, I think right now, I'm at a standstill at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Well, I have to disagree with Mr. Beetle. I think the fair does want to move out there, and I think it's a good idea, too. I think for now, the fair should be at Frontier Park until they do have the facilities to move to Archer. I wholeheartedly support the Laramie County Fair, but you know, anyone who's been to the fair knows that it's not well-attended. So, for me to support a project at Archer, I would like to see the fair board and the fair manager submit a five-year plan on how they intend to increase the attendance at the fair outside of the 4H and the FFA community, and also how they intend to sustain the facility throughout the rest of the year. One of the concerns I have going outside of the sixpenny, since it was already defeated once, would be the public backlash after that defeat, you know, if you went ahead and built it anyway. So, I think those are all things we need to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I'm very much in favor of the development of the Archer complex. And I think there's really four parts to that. There's the government complex, there's the fairgrounds, there's the recreational opportunities out there, and then of course, there's the commercial development. And I think all four parts of that are very crucial to the overall development. I think if you can develop the commercial part, it helps with the fair, helps with recreation. You develop the recreation, it helps with the commercial development as well. So I think all four parts of that are crucial. And I'm very much in favor of having an exhibit hall, an exhibit hall where we can have the fair, we can have a nice, large indoor fair. And I think this exhibit hall needs to be something that can be used year-round. If you recall back when we were talking about the sixpenny ballot, and the commissioners discussed putting the fairgrounds on the ballot, I voted against that. And the reason I voted against that is because I was concerned about the operation and the maintenance of that facility. And most of the time, these facilities are not self-sufficient. So I think as a commission, to move forward with the fairgrounds, and again, I am in favor of that, but we have to have a plan to operate and maintain that, and we have to plan to subsidize that. Now, if it comes to fruition, that they can market it, they can use it year-round, they don't need the subsidy, then that's fantastic. But we do need to have that plan moving forward. As far as how to fund it, I think there's a couple of different ways. Obviously, the sixpenny ballot has been discussed, naming rights have been discussed. You know, the development of the commercial land, when we have income from that, certainly would help. And then lastly, you know, we do have the mineral rights at the Archer complex. It would be nice to have a well that is drilled out there, and we have the income from that.
Right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our third question, and Mr. Spear will start the order here. Would you favor some means of requiring energy companies to maintain and improve county roads impacted by energy development?
Yes, I would. From the prior questions, it is in the agreements, they are working towards that. You know, these companies, the roads were there prior to them getting here, they're going to be here long after they leave. There's going to be maintenance required on them. I think they should be paying their fair share and helping maintain the roads.
Thank you. Mr. Beetle.
I think the development of these oil companies and that, the sole thing of them running them big trucks down those roads is leaving a burden on us. And the state has to make agreements with these people to help us pay for the maintaining and the upkeep on these roads. We have gotten so much subsidies from the oil industry and coal, but we need a little more to help us.
Okay. And Mr. Kessler.
I agree. As been mentioned before, Roden Bridge does have an agreement, user agreement in place that requires the users to repair, pay for repairs for the road system. And right now, they're working with individual oil companies, or if there's multiple users, they do it as a group. So, I think it's a good thing. I think they do derive some revenue from oversized and overweight permits, but it's not enough to cover any damages. So, right now, the system seems to be working fairly well, but I'm sure that if the use increases, that it'll have to be revisited in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Yes. And yes, just like we did with Camp Stool Road, when an oil company wants to come in and drill a well, they're required to go into our planning and development office and get a permit. That allows two things. That allows us to know, to provide an address to them, so emergency personnel know where to go. But it also allows us to say, okay, here is this well. We look at a map, we say, what roads are they going to use? Allows us to evaluate the road beforehand, during, and after the drilling-fracking process. It also allows us to formulate a road use agreement, and we have been very proactive with our road use agreements. And we have gone to these companies and said, hey, listen, this is the damage you're doing, this is what needs to be replaced. And these companies, for the most part, have been very good about that. And I brought up Camp Stool Road. We had two different oil companies, one to the tune of 400 and some thousand, one to the tune of 700 and some thousand, that helped us with the reconstruction of Camp Stool. You go out Camp Stool now, 1.1 million of that, over 1.1 million, was private industry money for that road. So yes, that's exactly what we have been doing, and yes, we definitely need to continue doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
Yes, I agree with everybody and everything that's been said here. The one thing that I would say is that the oil companies, this energy sector, what they don't want is more regulations. They feel like they're already burdened enough with that as it is. What they are willing to do is write a check, generally speaking, if it's going to save them the time and give them the opportunity to get in and get the product that they want out of the ground and get it on the road, so that they can make more money. So, as long as we keep our system in place and continue to improve it, without putting the burden of time and effort on them to do that, then I think that we're on the right track. Again, I think that everything can always be improved, and I would like to look closer at that. But we are on the right track. But yes, we absolutely need to stay with them as far as getting funding for our roads and the damage that they might do to them.
Thank you. And now, an opportunity for anyone who wants a few seconds to respond or add to your comments. Okay, we'll move on to the fourth question from the League, which is regarding the fifth penny. Should the county be more transparent with the public before the election and the projects to be funded, and accounting for the collections and spending afterwards? And we'll start with Mr. Beetle this time.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that we need to know what we're spending our money for, and we don't need I believe that we need to know what we're spending our money for, and we don't need to wait 10 months to find out what the bills are. I believe we need to know 30 days after the bill got issued to us. We need to know where the money's going. We need to keep track of the money, and we need to make sure that we're not wasting the money possessively on stuff that doesn't matter. The people need to know where their money's going. That's why we elected these officials. That's why we asked for the Fifth Penny sales tax, not the Sixth. We need to know where that money's going to. It needs to go back to the people in the county to maintain the county expense bills. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Well, I know that most government agencies have projects on the shelf, ready to go when they have the funds to do those projects. And so I think it would be beneficial to the voters if they did know what some of those projects are before they go to the polls. It was mentioned before that all that information is there if they want to take the time to go to the website or come down here and check it out. But, you know, like me, most people don't take that time. So I think it would be beneficial to the county also to provide that information through the media.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I think the county absolutely has to be transparent, not just with Fifth Penny revenue, but every revenue that comes into the county, and also with every expense. Specifically with Fifth Penny, every single meeting that we have had this spring, this summer, related to Fifth Penny, open meetings. Everybody's invited to come to those meetings. Every time we've discussed it, we've published what the funds will go to. We even had, last month, we had during our meeting, we had an agenda item where anybody in the audience, if they wanted to come, and again, the agenda is published. Anybody wants to come, they can make a comment on the Fifth Penny. So we open it up for public comment during our commissioner meeting. Now, we do things a little bit different with the county than the city. The county, or the city, does have specific projects. The county doesn't. We say 68% of this money is going to go to Public Works, and then we do the projects within that. Again, you want to know what those projects are? Available. Talk to Don Beard, Public Works Department. 11% of it goes to the county library. You want to know what that 11% of the Fifth Penny is doing at the county library? Ask Lucy Osborne, the county librarian. Be glad to share that with you. Health and Human Services, it goes to the south side bus route. We pay for out of that money. So absolutely, we need to be transparent. As to how we can be more transparent, I'm not certain, but I would certainly be open to any ideas, specific ideas, that people would have to that transparency.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
I think it's crucial that we have transparency in all government, all levels of government. I don't know that there's necessarily a way that Laramie County could become more transparent with their expenditures, or their revenues, but if so, I would certainly be willing to look into that and find a way. And I, like Mr. Thompson, would gladly take any input from anybody that has those ideas. I think the government needs to operate in a manner that, I mean, that's our money. That's your money. That's my money that they're spending. We need to know how they're spending. We need to know that it's being spent wisely and efficiently and effectively. And so the transparency does that. Regarding the Fifth Penny, I'm really not a big fan of taxes either. I'd like to find a way to make our government operate on 4%, and not need that Fifth Penny. I'd like to find a way to make the road and bridge more efficient, more effective, and that might even be through ways of things like privatization and seeing if we can maybe get some different companies out there where we can encourage growth in the population of Laramie County with private people that would take care of our roads, and they might be able to do it more effectively, they might be able to do it more efficiently, and they might be able to do it even for less money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
The word, they say transparency in government, I guess, I call it honest and open. The more open you are and honest about everything you're doing, the fewer questions there's going to be. As far as where the money goes, again, one area you can go to and know exactly what's happening. If you want to see where it's going on road and bridge, you look at it. If there's a list of eight or 10 projects, this is how they're going to do. This is priority one, and when that's completed and the money's paid out, we start on two, three, four, and five. I think it's very important, you know, people have been voting in this Fifth Penny tax for years. They're all right with it. They just need to be informed of where it's going, how it's being spent, and that it's doing them good, and it's for their benefit.
Thank you. And does anyone want to take a few seconds to add or respond? All right, well, good. That ends the League questions. I will move on to questions that have been submitted by the audience, and we don't have any additional, so I'll go ahead and ask the two questions so far that I asked of the first group that were submitted, and in that order, what is your vision for county employees? And we'll start again with Mr. Kessler, and I know it's kind of a general question, so you have a minute and a half to do what you want with that. It's about, what is your vision for county employees?
Well, as a former state employee, I know how important employees are, and I think that, you know, we need to do everything we can to take care of our employees. I think that the merit-based pay raises are a good idea. I suffered through many years of merit-based pay raises that were unfunded. So you'd go through your employee review, and it didn't mean anything. So I think that in order for those to work, they do need to be funded and make sure that they're done correctly. But yeah, I'm for the employees of Laramie County, and, you know, if you surround yourself with good employees, you have a lot fewer problems.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Greatest asset in Laramie County are employees. Greatest asset we have in Laramie County, and as a small business owner, I understand the value in spending money on your greatest asset. You've got to invest in that greatest asset. And when I took office, we were in pretty tough economic times. Things were tight, and we did have a hiring freeze. But every year, first thing we talked about was, what can we do for the employees? In those first couple of years, we were able to do bonuses because we were worried about down-the-road effect of increasing the pay. Last year, our budget looked better, and so the first thing we did was we talked about, listen, we've got to get our employees' pay raises. So five years without pay raises, we had compression. So last year, we had this ability to do a 2% to 5% increase based on longevity. This year, our budget numbers look good again. We're going to do a 2% to 5% based on performance evaluation. I will be honest, last year, when we talked about pay raises, there was a commissioner that adamantly spoke against pay raises for our county employees, and I was right there the entire way to say, listen, this is our greatest asset. We have got to make that investment. So yes, I'm absolutely in favor of taking care of our employees because, again, it is the number-one priority in Laramie County.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
As a business owner, I employ dozens of people, and they are the greatest asset. And, you know, some of them are great, and some of them are maybe not so great. And I think that as far as pay raises go with county employees, that merit-based pay raise is the way to go. I think it encourages greatness among these people. They will do, they will work harder, they will do more, and they ought to be rewarded for that. I think that it's this board, the commissioners' responsibility, along with department heads, to keep an eye on employees and to be sure that they encourage them and help them, and just make them to be better. And that's, I guess that's my vision for the county employees, is to take something that is great and make it even greater.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
I think pay is very important, but I think it's more important, the environment. It's been proven over and over again, wages aren't everything. They're very important, but they're not everything. It's the work environment. Guys that come to work happy to be there and get the job done, to know their boss is going to back them up, that they're going to be able to work together. I can't speak to any other, I can speak to law enforcement. Turnover rate of close to 42%. It costs a lot to retrain somebody or to bring somebody in from the testing procedure all the way up to where they can be on the road or in a detention facility, ready to go. That money could be spent a lot better. I think it's the environment. We have to have a better environment in the county, and money is important, but environment, I think, is the trump card.
Thank you. And Mr. Beetle.
Well, I agree with everything you said, except that I think with the employees, I think they'd be a lot happier if they had more benefits. Upgrade their benefits. I mean, hospitalization, dental, glass, stuff like that. I think they'd stand down to raise to get that for their families and the other people that walk around them. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, well, we've gone through the group, and a couple of seconds, does anyone have anything to add to what they said or respond to comments? Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Marguerite, I guess I would like to add that the county has a phenomenal benefits package, and our employees have consistently said that they're very, very happy with that benefits package.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll move on to a question that was raised in the last group of candidates, and, you know, it made reference to Mr. Hazenour, but it does raise some good question about how you see a board, if you're elected to the board or re-elected. You're relating to other departments in county government, your demeanor, decorum, attitude, and also as a member of a working board. If you can just address that, and the person who wrote it was critical of Mr. Hazenour, but it's a good question in general, I think, to talk about how you would relate to other agency heads and departments and to each other. And I guess we'll start with Mr. Thompson this time.
You know, the past two years, Laramie County has had some challenges. We've had some hostile work environment complaints against a member of our commission. We've had anti-bowling education, sensitivity in the workforce education, and those are tough on employees, and they're remarkably tough on a county commission. So yeah, having lived through that, I certainly understand the fact that it's crucial and it's imperative that the people we elect to public office has good people skills, have the ability to work with other people, has the ability to talk, to get along, to have the ability to disagree. Because when you have certain circumstances in government and when it's elected officials, and I think you can see this even at the state level, I think when you have those situations going on, it hurts morale of the entire organization, from the other commissioners down to every single person that works in the county.
Thank you. Mr. Woods.
I think that as humans, we need to be respectful to other humans, and that is without any difference. I think that whether you're a commissioner or whether you mow grass for the county, we need to show respect to each other. I'm not willing to say anything about anybody that has or is serving, but I know as far as I'm concerned, it's very critical that I earn your respect, and that means that if you have a heartbeat, I will earn your respect, and you will have my respect. Just to put a little tail on this question, not related necessarily to this board, but to county employees, to department heads, to those that are in charge, I think it's very important as a public that this board makes sure that there's no sign of any retribution ever to any public person, any citizen of Laramie County, for speaking out or saying something regarding a department head or how a department is run or a member of a department. And honestly, it's occurred in Laramie County. It's occurred in Cheyenne. It's occurred recently, and it's something that we need to watch out. So I think that generally speaking, we all ought to be free to express our opinion, and we ought to be free to respect each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
Well, it's only obvious that we're never going to make everybody happy all the time. You're going to get bad news. When I started in law enforcement, one of the key factors, they said, if you treat, if you act professional and treat everybody with courtesy, that's going to be a major step in dealing with people. And I think that is an absolute for anybody in leadership. You have to treat them with respect. You have to be professional in your manner, and I believe as long as you do those, then you'll be able to even disagree with somebody as long as you look them in the eye, treat them with respect, and say, I know you're not going to be happy with this, but this is the way it is. Bullying from working in the schools in the district, it never has solved anything. It only creates more problems.
Thank you. Mr. Beetle.
I think for being on this board and trying to get along, everybody's going to have differences. Bullying, we teach our children not to do that. That should be the same standards that we live by here. I think we all ain't going to agree, and I don't think we're all ever going to agree on everything. And I think that bullying is unacceptable. I mean, if you have a problem, let's work it out together. If you can't do that, you shouldn't be sitting at this table. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And Mr. Kessler.
Well, I echo everything everyone else has said. My belief is that the Board of County Commissioners shouldn't be dabbling in the day-to-day business of the county employees. That should be left to the department heads, and if at some point it gets to their level, it's because there's something that the department heads cannot handle at that level. So I agree that, you know, the commissioners should be above all of that, and, you know, there's no reason that that should go on, and I also believe that there should be some recourse, if it does, at any level, for disciplinary action to be taken.
Thank you. Does anyone want to take a few seconds to add or respond? Okay, then. We'll move into the final part of our forum, which is, everyone will have two minutes to sum up or cover something that hasn't been covered. Use it any way you like, two minutes. And again, at the end, I will announce again the rebroadcast dates for this forum, and want to thank everyone who has shown up tonight and who is following it online, and the candidates, of course. And so the two minutes, we'll start with Mr. Woods. To sum up, you're talking to the voters tonight.
Well, thank you for coming and listening to me. I hope that it was not too entirely painful. I would, I want to quickly just, there was one question that we didn't get a chance to follow up on, and so if I could do that real quick. It was on the county fair, and I had spoke about that I wasn't really in favor of the development at Archer. And it's more that I'm not, I'm not in favor of the way the development at Archer has been done. I'm not in favor of us building a million-dollar morgue and then finding out that we had done it the wrong way and have to spend another $100,000 to make it suitable for the current coroner so that he would go work. Those are types of things that I don't think are acceptable, and that's not fiscal responsibility. I think that it's very important that fiscal responsibility and efficiency of government is a top priority for anybody sitting in these chairs. That's what I would assure you that I will do. I will be fiscally responsible. I will work to make our government as efficient as it possibly can. And again, I thank you for coming, and I appreciate your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
Well, again, I thank all of you for being here, and I will state very much so. It's so much more comfortable sitting out there than here. This is a constant learning experience. I mean, seeing what all goes on and how it goes on, and it will continue to be that for as long as any of us are elected, that's for sure. As for myself, it's very simple. I promise that if I'm elected, I'm going to give you 100% of my effort, 100% of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Beetle.
Well, I'm running mainly because I think we need a terrible change in the county in the way it's being run. I'm not saying I'm the right candidate, but I'm saying I would give you 100% of everything I give, and I'm for the people and with the people. I also appreciate your vote at the end, and I like the League of Women Voters. Thank you very much for this chance to come speak.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kessler.
Well, I can just tell you that you won't see any publicity, stunts, or gimmicks from me, and once I'm elected, I certainly won't wait until the next election to decide to focus on my job. So I want to thank everyone for your support in advance, and I hope to see you in November.
All right, thank you. Short and sweet. Mr. Thompson.
That's a tough act to follow.
Hungry.
My deepest appreciation to you, Marguerite, and to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight, and everybody that came to listen to us tonight. Truly remarkable time in Laramie County. We've got wonderful things going on. We've got the Swan Ranch development. We have got North Range Business Park. We've got Microsoft in Laramie County. We've got Magpul coming to Laramie County. We've got the development of the Archer complex. I mean, truly, a remarkable I mean, truly a remarkable situation that we've got going on here. So it comes down to, who do you want to lead Laramie County into this remarkably exciting future? With Diane saying that she's not going to run again, that makes me the longest-tenured commissioner, makes me the commissioner with the most experience, makes me the commissioner with the voting record of doing the right things for the people in Laramie County. I appreciate you being here tonight. I ask you, please be informed. Please vote. My name is Troy Thompson, and I would appreciate your support on August 19th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, you can watch this forum, the previous five, and these five candidates will be rebroadcast Saturday, July 12, 11:00 a.m. on Channel 19. Tomorrow, please tune in for the forum for three county offices, District Attorney, County Clerk, and Sheriff. And on Thursday, we'll have the legislative races. So join us online, and we will announce those rebroadcast dates later, too. And can we please thank everyone for coming to watch online and the candidates as well? Thank you. Thank you very much. And again, if you have, think of a question, send it to lvvcheyenne@gmail.com. Thank you.